All right, goodbye, seven o'clock. Welcome, audience. Are you ready for tonight, even? Can I say that, are you ready for tonight?
Yeah.
Awesome. My name is Anthony Kian. I'm chair of the American City Council. It's a pleasure to welcome all of them. The audience and today, to join this evening. I know that it all has been to work around in the year. This is the one event that you will not want to miss. I want to say that, um, so take some time to break this event together, to get the opportunity for the residents of six district and other stakeholders, an opportunity to engage in their political processes, to vote, uh, to support a candidate or work for a candidate that is, uh, that matters in the issues. Again, before we start, I would like after everyone can up, and you can go to your next reasons. I would like to give reasons for the United States of America, and to the recovery of its sands, our nations, and the way we're in the physical, and we're the team, and just, so, all. Thank you. Again, um, I just wanted to introduce a couple amazing members. They are the members of the organizations, uh, who I can volunteer there after quite time and commitment, to join to put this event together. I wanted to call my first co-chair, Laura Sun, up to the front. Please give a big round of applause, uh, on the contribution to the cause. And after, I want to call my second co-chair, Mr. Charles Sun. Please give a big round of applause. And also our board member, uh, Sam Khan. And we're here today tonight, to present to everybody the community. And also, um, I think to our board member, our M. Kian, but also introduce our advisory member, Mr. Mark Coleman. He's who are at the town. If you please come on the picture, if you take a look at the interview. And also our advisor, Dr. Anna Froni, Professor of American History. If you can take a look at the picture, if you could. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We do tonight. Now that I came tonight, to my co-chair.
Thank you very much. What a beautiful sight to see everyone here. Yay, sixth district, right? Oh, my God. You have some very interesting constituents. And a beautiful panel here, everyone. Just give them a hand. Look at them. This is amazing, this thing. So my name is Laura Thong. Um, I came to sixth district, uh, to work with you camps. I live here about 20 years, and I have a few companies there. Um, okay, so if you're wearing any kind of support for my candidates, make sure to remove it. Now, if you're not wearing anything under that, please step out. We may, we may not want to see what's under. Okay? Thank you so much. Okay, let's do some housekeeping roles, uh, or no special notes. A back door is way out in the back, just go straight back out. Um, exits, just make sure you see one in the back and one inside. Turn off your phones. Um, here's all the evidence. If you have questions, please write those on your flashcards, and then bring it up to your friend. So two of the board members will be reading the questions from the audience. And the board questions will be read or asked by Dr. Alex Norman. So now I want to introduce Dr. Alex Norman. Dr. Alex Norman is a emeritus professor at UCLA for social welfare. So he's taught there about 20 years. After that, he have worked on recreating Long Beach. Data mining. So he knows data, such for sixth district, what's the crime rate? Let's see a performance, um, percentage. So he's been answered his questions. Um, what else, Alex? That's enough. Okay, come with me, just throw us the candidates. And if you could stand, so that we can see you, that'd be great. The first one, Mr. Greg Ulysey. First name, thank you so much. Second, Mr. Steve Mayne. And third, Josephine Willis Will. And our fourth is Dr. Shuri Saro. And our fifth is, it's like, so, Sharifah, sorry. And our sixth is Mr. De Andrew, councilman. Our fourth and not last, Anna Arce. Let's get started. I'm gonna hand the mic over to Dr. Alex Norman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, this is really a historic major because as on a Cambodian reference, it would be. Cambodians are not, um, historically, have not historically participated in city affairs. So this is a major step. It's a major step, not only for the Cambodian people, but for the community of our citizens. This is a country of immigrants. And the immigrants that look in this country, including those in poverty, and those called African slaves. So we honor the contributions of all people. And it's good that this is such a diverse country because it represents a district that is equally diverse. Tonight, all the candidates will be given two minutes to present an opening statement, the content of which is their own. Also will be given one minute to end their statement. So at the end, they'll have a closing statement, one minute. At the beginning, a two-minute statement. We ask the candidates not to debate each other or attack each other, because this is a forum to reform and not to debate. So we also ask the members of the audience, if you have questions, not ask those questions, or if you have flashcards and wondering products, write your questions that you have. And we will collect those. And if you're not sure, we will read back your question. So 50% of the questions will come from this board. And 50% of the questions will come from the audience. That's the balance of the board. We also would like to suggest to you, we also would like to suggest to you that the candidates not have any cross-talk. In other words, not challenge each other or attack each other. However, in case that does happen, the candidate who is attacked will be given a minute to reflect. The time speaker for this event is Mr. Mark Coleman. And he will have flashcards or the analysis of warning them of one minute. If you go over the one minute, both Mr. Coleman and I will intervene. We hope that will not be necessary, because we want to give everyone an equal opportunity to express their concerns and desires. So, the first question, and the analysis of the opening statement, we will go from, uh, right, your own right, without respect, through, beginning with Ms. Austin.
Thank you, thank you for having me here today. It's a pleasure to be here with you. My name is Anna Arce. I was born and raised in District Six. My parents are immigrants also, from Mexico, that settled in District Six 40 years ago. I'm now raising my two daughters that are in the audience. Nari, who goes to Franklin, and Alice, who goes to Lincoln Elementary. Um, she grew up in a very humble home, six kids in one bedroom. Fast forward to college, I was a working mom, and graduated from USC with my two kids. Very dedicated to my family, to my community. I was a former president of Latino Nation California. We worked towards advocating for women's rights, immigration, education, and then some of the work that you know, to be ready. So I'm very excited to be here. Thank you for having me. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is De Andrew Navina. And I am a councilman since six district until seven. I'm gonna reveal that to you guys, these individuals I work. We're voted allowed to come in one more time. And I'm here because I was called upon. I am not a politician, I am just people. I've been in this community for past 75 years, and I see Long Beach, and I see the strongness. I've only won, that's only been five. Sixth district African-American councilpeople to use. This used to be called the red light district. And people who look like me did not cross certain streets after a certain hour. When the first Cambodians came to Long Beach, they were my schools when I was teaching in Quilson High School. Over the years, we have become one of the most dense and diverse districts in the city, involving an office out of campus, many great things. We have gotten the streets like Hill, Pacific, below. I'll need a service, and we have created diagonal parking in areas like Bryant Avenue and BCH. We have opened additional green spaces to walk forward, measure eight, which has helped the new playgrounds in existing parks. I helped to establish Cambodia Town, and I've led the effort to continue this sport, the business along the corridor here, along this area. I wrote the language access policy for people who do not speak English, and coming to the city, and speak the language so they can be served at City Hall. I've been a proud supporter of the justice fund, which helped people who were deportated in the Biden crime situation. And I also have taught at Cabral High School, and I see it as a link for the struggling families who put the things together. I have a food pantry here every week, because I also had jobs to stop the food that I told you that, completely keeping youth active in the server, and using district dollars to fund the employment opportunities for you. I'm a community and a family man, and the knowledge and experience represent you and your city. Tonight, I will be humbled to earn your vote for the upcoming election. And thank you very much.
Thank you for having me here. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sharifa Hardy. I decided to run for city council because I wanted to be of service to the sixth district of Long Beach. I've been in the sixth district about two years. I've been in Long Beach for about two, since 2003. Both of my children graduated from Cabral High School. My sister and brother, my nephew, graduated from Long Beach Poly. But where I was near Santa Fe and Wardlow, where the 405 meets the 710, is a different district than the sixth district. I want to use my experience as an entrepreneur, building my first website in 1994, taking a company public, and raising over $6 million. My focus is on being of service by creating jobs in the sixth district of Long Beach. That's my focus. Thank you for your talk.
Good evening, everyone. What is your choice? Do you have a name, school, or an opportunity? Thank you for taking your time to spend this Friday evening with us. Uh, my name is Suli Sorrow, Dr. Suli Sorrow. And I'm running for city council because I want to make this district better. This district deserves an effective representative, and it's a part of the city that I feel has been neglected. This district has the second highest poverty rate in the city, and we need to change that. I'm here to fight for our fair share. I have the experience to lead, and I'm ready to serve as an effective representative for this district. I'm a mother, I'm an educator, and a nonprofit founder. I was the chair of the Citizen Police Complaint Commission. I was a policy advisor for State Senator Ricardo Lara. And I have a master's in public administration and a doctorate in education. As your council member, here is what I'm going to do to work hard every day to make sure this district is better. I'm going to prioritize public safety, develop a comprehensive strategy for homelessness, expand of quality affordable housing, social support and transportation needs, responsibly manage our city's budget and tax dollars, and promote business development, and create good job locally. So I want to address the safety hazard, the blight, and illegal dumping that happens in our alley in our city. I want to clean this city up. So I want to enhance the open space and recreational facilities, and build stronger partnership with schools and our community. Our kids need to feel safe playing outside. They need, our street needs to be clean, and we need new businesses to create a local thriving economy. It's time for new leadership. We can, we can, and we must do better. And I would be honored to earn your vote.
Hi, thank you. Hi, thank you, everybody, for coming today. My name is Josephine Bisner. I lived in Long Beach for 19 years, and the sixth district 14 years. I started regularly community watch in 2015, and kept regularly, um, on patrol. I started a Midtown Neighborhood Watch as well. I patrol the streets every single night as much as I can, from 10:00 AM to about 4:00 AM in the morning. I do have roughly under 500 people throughout Long Beach City, and including Lakewood, that patrol with me as well. They walk, they jog, they bicycle, they skateboard, they do whatever they can to keep our streets safe. Um, also, I am a small business owner as well. I am 38 years old. And I've seen the good, the bad, and the worst of sixth district. I've seen the lack of leadership in our sixth district. I have people come to my door, people calling me all the time to walk their kids to school, especially Washington Middle School and Lafayette School, where the Eastside Lagoes gangs jumped them to try to initiate them into the gangs. And that's how I do. I've gone toe-to-toe with them, and I'm still here, and I'm still standing. I'm a survivor and a warrior, and I will fight for you guys. Thank you.
Mark, can I get to it in a half minute?
No.
Well, I tried. Well, good evening, by the way, to meet sort of what can I do about to welcome, uh, Camp City City. Um, my name is Steve Yubomang. I am a true genocide survivor. I came to the state at the age of 21 years old. I don't speak any English. I worked my way to university college, put myself at Cal State Law, and graduated with a BA degree. Since the day I came to the state, I've been involved in the community for the last 30 years. I was, I've been the leader of my club from high school to state college, to Cal State Law. I also volunteered my time at senior center at the Fourth Street, being a VP to the police commissioner, FBI chief deputy commissioner, for Long Beach PD. Uh, also helped at RSCAD and MacArthur Power for the last 10 years, as a gay specialist. Um, also, it's been a president of Camp CC, a vice president, a treasurer, the president together on Anaheim Street. And also, I'm a founder of the KIA Foundation that builds lives for underprivileged for the last five years. My ultimate goal, the reason being I run for this council, so because I see day in and day out, what does sixth district look like. I'm gonna echo what Zingu said. We are the second quarter of all the ninth district. And that shouldn't be. Lobby should be all equal. Um, I stuck in because I want to change our community. I want my kid to live in lobby. I want my friends stay in lobby. Thank you.
Do you want to give a swat? Is that good?
Yes.
Thank you. There was a time when a young man or a woman could go to college and know that they could find a job in a prosperous city such as Long Beach. They could really get independent decisions, and really get started founding, not seeing the half their paycheck go to rent. They could put money away for a rainy day, and finally enjoy the fruits of their labors for all the years of their hard work. Long Beach is no longer that place. Long Beach is so expensive, it's no longer inviting to these young men and women. And our seniors struggle to keep a place they call home for decades. It is no longer inviting for young families who think that they can raise their kids in good schools, and not sure if it's a safe place or will prepare them for their future. We cannot solve affordable housing with rent control alone, and we cannot fight up in the private city with more division. We need jobs and opportunities, after school programs, parental programs for women and men. We need programs to prepare our boys and girls for the real world. We need learning life skills. And as a professor, I do it on every day. Nor they need the help and the assistance, and I would say that they have not received the same level of good education that we think they deserve. Our community is one of the most diverse in Long Beach, and its history is unfortunately right for this, uh, very poor racial divides. But we have more in common for what divides us. It doesn't matter whether the color of your skin or who you love. We're all on the same journey to the golden gates, and we will all be judged ultimately. Long Beach will continue to pressure our good people out, and will become a city of the haves and have-nots. Our people position will never be the same. It's time for a change. It's time to turn away with our old political politics and shujon. It's time to stop the corruption that has hurt our community for too long. Note to somebody from the outside, perceive that there are more possibilities, and know that there's a dream, that it's just work together for hard work that obtains work money.
We heard from a lot of candidates. They have mentioned many things that they see wrong in this district. They, yes? They, they indicated that there are several things that they see wrong in this city. With issues homelessness, crime, education, leadership. But this is a long laundry list. And we know that very often, when people have so many problems, that they become overwhelmed by them. So the first question is, what do you see as the most important or the most critical issue in the city, in the law? And let's begin with, um, response from Mr. Ursery back.
We can say that the most critical issue is along with the things, that if we do not focus on opportunities, we're gonna miss the chance to help our young men and women have a fighting chance in the real world. I see every day as a college professor, I know their yearning for education. They want to learn more. But if we stop by just working on top of topical issues, we're not going to get to the heart of what's going on in our city. There are differences of what's going on in District One and Two, but we do not see the money happening here. So if we want to help our young men and women to help, we need to start by giving them the opportunities to help. Not letting them leave our town and never come back.
So I mean, the biggest issue that I see in the sixth district in particular is the crime rate. It's not safe for any of us walk down the ground six, seven o'clock. There's a statistic for the last 12 months, from October 2018 until now, 52 homicides in lobbies. That alarming rate for RC, called diversity, called a staple, a safety in the lobby. It was one of the main issue that I'm going to tackle with the community organization, with our police department, work with all the nonprofit organizations to make sure that people can feel safe on the street. If this street is not safe, the business is gonna move out. If the business move out, it's no job for our community.
The one thing that I see on my patrols every single night is people sleeping on the sidewalk, in the bushes, underneath the bridges and the riverbed. Everywhere you see them, that's our major focus. That would be my major focus. Mental health issue is the biggest one that I see. There's a lot of them being dumped illegally here. I'm saying that they are bused in and dropped at different markets, especially on Anaheim. And you see them every single night, kids in cars sleeping. That would be my focus, because once we get that done and cleared, and get them the proper, um, health, education, um, jobs, then we can start bringing in businesses. Businesses will not come back here to sixth district because of the way it looks.
So the most pressing issue, I've shared it earlier, is the poverty rate. We are the second highest poverty, uh, number of households poverty. And so what's really central for me is ensuring that we address economic equity in this district. And that is making sure that not only are we creating pathways for people to have opportunities to improve their wages, but we also need to make sure that we're also providing them educational opportunities that allows them to do that. And that we need to support our local entrepreneurs by putting incubators in each of our business quarters to ensure we're helping businesses from startup to growth to success. And I also think that because, once you have a more economic equitable district, you're gonna lower crime rates, because people are gonna do better. There will be more peoples in the shop, decreasing the number of crimes that will occur and the blight that will occur, because we, people will want to care for an area that is doing well and is being developed. So those are the, that's the pressing issue I want to tackle right away that's connected to the issues of homelessness, affordable housing, and many other issues. Thank you.
I believe that the crime rate is important. I believe that homelessness is important. I believe that the poverty rate is important. But I believe those are symptoms of the problem. The main problem is jobs, creating jobs. I believe that most Americans of every race right about now are one paycheck away from being homeless. One accident, one medical situation, one car note that they missed from being homeless. So if we create jobs, we're able to combat the crime, to take care of the homelessness, to fight the poverty, to fight the hunger that's going on in our community. I come outside my house, and I see people sleeping on the sidewalk in front of my house. I see the crime rate. So if we're able to bring in businesses and bring in jobs with a living wage, I think we will be able to rectify the crime, the homelessness, and the poverty. Thank you.
You know, I listen to all these individuals because to me, I think we have happened all of these areas. But housing homelessness is one of the biggest things we have, because housing homelessness goes hand in hand. And time and time again, I say, we just can't deal with that tonight. I'm proud and honored for the leadership we have secured numerous affordable housing projects in the sixth district. We have Long Beach Boulevard in Burnet. We have Long Beach Boulevard in BCH. We bought four brand new homes in Anderson. And we're about to bring on affordable housing for as soon as the MRK and BCH. We're bringing affordable housing for families and children in Anheuser, in Waller. We're bringing housing to Long Beach Boulevard in Rio for the homeless and the special needs. I have been a champion for these projects to give our local residents the first opportunity to apply, to move in. And I've also worked with every developer to ensure that the construction jobs that brings to our community, that we have an opportunity to work in those. So I just recently supported our local legislation to cap rent control to 10%. And acting for the landlords provides for those relocation decisions that tenants will ask for to leave, uh, uh, that's an unjust cause. Stop now? Okay.
The most critical issue for me have always been safety. Safety, the way that our police and our community interact. Um, we definitely need to create more of a community-based system model. We definitely need to change that. We also need to look at infrastructure. We need to look at the lighting. The streets are dark at night. So we need to fix the streets, make the streets lighter, work with our street officers to make our communities safer. And then we can look at economic development for the businesses. Thank you.
So, so many problems. And so few resources. And so few people who are willing to put their children to the field. One of the issues that has been plaguing us nationally, as well as locally, is governmental accountability. So, in your term, this one term that you have, what do you hope to accomplish? what do you hope to accomplish, given the myriad issues that you have set forth? What is it that you can zero in on and at the end of your term, be held accountable for? And let's begin this with this person.
That's a great, great question. Four years is not enough trying to accomplish everything they want to accomplish. I definitely believe we need better transportation support. We definitely need to reduce homelessness by at least 50%. That would be my goal. We definitely need to increase the business economic development along the Anaheim and Pacific border. I wish we can bring some of the resources from the tourism, from downtown into District 6 so that we can also benefit from the tourism, from the conventions. There's so many things working with our police officers to reduce our crime rates. And not only our police officers, but also our community members that are in the frontline, in the community, patrolling, walking the streets, neighborhood community watches that will actually make our community safer. Thank you.
You know, I've been in, I've been in this office for many, many years. And there's so many things I think we can do or we should do. But all of this takes community involvement. You know, I've been here so long and been down at the city council. And when I look at it at DICE, I always wonder, where is our community? But I'm here every day in my office. You can call me at any time. Everyone in this community, everyone knows Mr. Andrews, you have my personal number. I do any and everything I can to try to help support you with those various things. But to me, all we need as an individual in this district is for you to get involved. We can't talk about it. You have to be about it. Come to that city council and let individuals know that the problems that we're going through. Because remember, people are power. Without you, we are nothing. So please, give me your support and I will give you the things that we ask for. Thank you.
I think at some point I might become redundant. But my message, I'm going to keep driving home, is jobs, 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 jobs. That is what I want to accomplish. One of the things that I have done is partnered with Pastor Gerald Johnson and First Lady Belinda Johnson of the Greater Harvest Church. And we've been spending months giving clothes to the community, giving shoes, giving, giving to the community. And the main focus was dress for success. So often, people can get their resume taken care of. They can get that job interview, but what do they wear to the job interview? What do they wear to work? There are so many little things that stop people from being able to have the jobs and the careers that I want. And that's my focus. That's why I wrote my book Signs You Might Be an Entrepreneur. That helps entrepreneurs be successful. And that's what my focus is: jobs.
So I plan on being there more than four years. So I'm going to give you an ambitious plan of what I want to do. The first thing I want to make sure I do is that you feel proud of living and coming from the sixth district. When you talk about the sixth district, these are the things you're going to talk about because I'm going to accomplish these particular things. I mentioned it earlier. I want to make sure we achieve economic growth, equity in this district. Two, I want to bring housing solution and make our neighborhoods livable. And three, making ours district safer. Hold on. Four, infrastructure improvement. Five, children's, youth, and family and seniors. I want to make sure we provide culturally appropriate programming and comprehensive programming for all of them. Health access and equity, environmental stewardship and protection. And lastly, making sure we do not forgot, forget about arts and culture. I want to make sure we create a sense of identity and belonging. And that's what's going to bring pride to our district. Thank you.
In 2016, I took down a human trafficking ring and a drug trafficking ring in the Brooklyn area. I also took down another business that was dealing drugs to kids. I watched him as well. That's what needs to be done here in sixth district. There is still a big huge drug trafficking ring and a small human trafficking ring here. And that's why I'm combating them every single day and helping the police to get them off the street and in jail. My focus is the kids, to make it a safe community for them. My slogan since 2016 was unity in the community. I need the community members to step up because I am only one person that will stand up and take part. But I need help from you guys as well. Thank you.
I say from the very first day when I started the five board DC council candidate, the three things that I'm going to work on: safety, economic development, I'm a loan officer and a physical consultant. Thirdly, infrastructure. I'm going to focus mostly on our safety within the sixth district. I want to increase the police presence along the Anaheim corridor. Right now, from what I know, I just wrote with the police department a couple weeks ago, along Anaheim, there's not a whole lot present of police department. And also, I want to create, A, community laws, get the, empower our community. Get the community involved. And I say it again, when I get in the office the first hundred days, I want to work house to house. I want to hear the individuals go. I want to hear what is the thing that they want to get things done.
So the question was about government accountability, right? Let me tell you what the problem is in this city. It starts with the city manager. We all know what's going on, right? We need to hold the city manager accountable. We need to have an action, somebody who like me understands and reads these contracts all the time. To stop the contract on the bidding and go to a part of the system that allows the contract to be under bid and sold at a higher cost later. We see that in the budgeting all the time with 20, 30% hikes that end up on the contract. We also need the help with police training and accountability. And start treating our minorities and our homeless people seriously. We're going to help District 6 with accountability. Starting with police accountability and working with our city managers will help. It was not too long ago in this city that Ernst Meyer took a $25,000 bid in the 1970s. If you want to change the city, start straight there.
It was saying that we know what the problems are. We know where the problems are. Half of the people who are homeless in the United States are in California. Long Beach has between 5,000 and 6,000 homeless people by the last count. How would you work? We know what the homeless problem is, but how would you work? The city government and the non-profit organizations to address, not to solve, to address that problem of homelessness. And let's start with Mr. Ursery. Let's start with Dr. City.
So I think there is two approaches I would take to homelessness at home. And that is a prevention route. And one, to make sure that we are providing, earlier I shared that we need to make sure we're addressing the poverty issue that provides employment that people have in order to afford the rent that they have, they have to pay. And so, and the other thing is, once people are homeless, we need to provide them the support they need, the emergency shelter that they need, and that we provide the social services. And that's where the nonprofits, that's where the city services come in. And partnering to ensure that we get people back on their feet. They might have not only issues as far as finding employment, but other mental health, maybe substance abuse. And we need to provide that holistic support. And get them to permanent supportive housing and then getting them to longer-term housing. And those are the things that I would concretely focus my energy on in as far as how we would address homelessness.
He's changing it up.
Yes, he is. The way I would combat homelessness is to focus on the skillset. I was laid off eight times. I lost everything that I owned aside from the clothes on my back. But I was, I didn't have a certain skillset to get certain jobs. I was grateful, it was grateful that through the grace of God, that I was able to get another job, being an entrepreneur. So I think part of the problem with homelessness is they do not have specific skills required to do certain jobs. But if we train them and give them life skills, we can get part of the homeless off of the streets. I met a homeless man on Sunday when we were giving out clothes. And he told me, he told me his story, but he said to me, he said, "Sharifa, I have a drug problem." But I didn't have a drug problem when I became homeless. So I want to work on the drugs, work on the homelessness by create, giving skills that people can use to get better paying jobs.
You know, when we talk about homelessness, when you talk about the individuals you see out there on the streets, an individual sit out there and say, "Those people, those people could be us people." You miss the two paychecks. You know, downtown, I watch it and listen to it all the time. You know, you don't become homeless because of the fact that you have a job. You become homeless because the rent is so high. This is the thing that we're dealing with because the fact that if you live in a place where it costs you a thousand and less than four months, it's costing you 1,600, you don't get a $600 paycheck raise. So this is where we're coming about. We're creating homelessness ourselves through our rent control. And this is why I'm fighting so hard to make sure that these people that are put out to this homeless situation, that these individuals own all of this property, you will be accountable and be held accountable. Because the fact that if you put them out, you're going to have to give them first, last, and now try to help them find a place. This is why I fight for it. It's no crime to be homeless. But remember, the homeless come about because of the fact that we as individuals sit around and say, "Oh, it's okay that you can raise my rent." No, it's not okay that you can raise my rent. You got a real life. I'll stop.
Long Beach definitely we do have a problem when it comes to housing affordability. We're one paycheck away from moving at all, we're one paycheck away from becoming homeless. But at the beginning of this year, when there was a point in time count, there was 1,870 homeless folks, which 600 of them are sheltered homeless folks and about 1,200 of them are on the street. So what I would suggest to the $30 million that Long Beach funded on happening the issue is creating a program that protects, or sort of a safety law. You have a prevention program to stop folks from entering the homeless. Which is, from that report, 52% of people were experiencing homelessness for the first time. So prevention program, oversight committee to oversee the $30 million, speed up the process for acquiring permanent housing and tracking the individuals who are homeless. Thank you.
I grew up with, unfortunately, 22 siblings, so I am the 15th one. I grew up poor and I was homeless for about a year in my twenties. So I know what it is to be homeless. What we can do is, we need to stop the busing of the homeless people from other cities into our city due to the money. There's a contract that stipulates that we need certain amount of homeless people in our district in order to get money from certain organizations. I want to stop that. I want to work with all organizations out there. I want to make sure that we can lift this in the bud because we do not need no more people homeless. It's, it's a travesty if you go on patrols or even if you're just driving, walking, you see them every single day. And it hurts. It's heartbreaking. Another thing is, I will give up my check if I am candidate. I will not accept the check. It will go back into the sixth district to try to figure out what to do. Thank you.
Let's say for those who are hungry and vote to those who are poor because we're hungry anyway. We need to start looking at homeless group, what they really are, people. Children are crying like nobody else and like anybody else like us. It will not be long before more people be on the streets. And it will not be long before they will have more consequences for the city. It starts with rent. I have a pretty idea on that. Rent will put more people on the streets. We need to stop citing homeless people for victimless crimes. This happens all the time. Her name was Denise. She lived on my street for almost a year. And it was a trouble for her for just being homeless. I'm sure she tracked up citations of and write for being homeless and will never be able to figure that out on her own. And I need to make sure these services are available. We need to stop. And let's just start with the first thing that we need, rather than anything else. A roof over their head, because we all need a place to sleep at.
For me personally, America is the most powerful country in the world. We are the powerhouse economic, but to see homeless live on the street. I work downtown LA. I drive through the strip road every single day. We talk about 60,000 homeless live on the street. My first thing I want to do, I want to tackle, go through the quote, what costs homeless? Of course, housing. Of course, rent going up skyrocketing. Will a family afford making $30,000? You can't afford to live. I want, I want also to work with a nonprofit organization out there that actually help drive mental health issue. Housing, also create job for the community.
One of the things that seems to be echoed in this panel is housing, jobs, economic security. And when we look at unemployment in our city, or we look at unemployment in our country, and I'm just recently thinking that I just read where 23,000 people were laid off. Now, that means that what we need to do are create jobs in our community that don't leave our community. And one way of doing that is through small businesses. So what would you do to retain the small businesses that we have? And to develop them, because so many of these small businesses are going out of business because of lack of funds, a lack of loans, or lack of resources. So what would you do? Let's start with you, Dr. City.
I want to see if you can give me to go first. This is Dave in the subject area that I'm familiar with. As SBA loan officer and a physical consultant, I have helped small businesses grow from a $40,000 to a $10 million annually. It's what my regular wage job from 8 to 5 in downtown LA. As you can see, along Anaheim corridor, businesses have been losing left and right. They're moving now. There's no one coming in. Why? The crime is too high. The business closed around 5 o'clock. Why? Because they don't run well in the dark. So first and foremost, as the loan officer, as a consultant, I want to look at those numbers. What costs if it's not doing well?
I hope we address big business issues as well. Because this city has an attitude of scaring businesses away, just like they did with JetBlue. That's what scares jobs away. Let's talk to the small businesses though. I appreciate that. Rent is not a housing issue. It is a business issue. Second Street, businesses are closing because they can no longer afford. Metro rates and sales taxes, that hurts not only the poor, but businesses. People spend less, plenty of half less, and it costs more. Parking on Broadway, it's called the Broadway diet or the parking diet, I've heard, has driven away 20, 30% of traffic. We need to fix the franchise taxes in our small business division in our state because it's unorganized and our tons of dead businesses are on the Excel sheets I play. We need to check out SPOR. Has anybody heard what that is? It's a free service to help our community be able to get businesses started off the ground. So we have services, we got opportunities, people can do. So as you know, rent, measuring, auto taxes, and being, having a poor attitude for businesses in this city is going to hurt our ability to pay jobs.
Thank you. Most of the businesses in District 6 are small business owners. Trends and the way consumer shop keeps changing, it keeps evolutionizing, right? So technology is a huge factor. People are now ordering from Uber Eats. So that can affect the small business owner who owns a restaurant that does not know how to use that type of technology. And that restaurant has been there for 45 years. So for me, I think we need to bring up our business owners up to date with the technology and the changing trends, the way that we do business. Yes, rent is also affecting the small business owners. It's one up for them. Yes, rent is also affecting the small business owners, it's one of them as well. I would want to bring in more outside exposure, like festivals into our community. I would like to bring some of that business that is in downtown Long Beach with the tourism, the convention, into our restaurants downtown, all the different, in the Pacific corridor and the Anaheim corridor.
Thank you. You know, I've always said that, you know, a job will stop the bullet. If you're sixteen or sixteen, you should have a chance to work. And I've been a champion to create a lot of that. You know, I work alongside the businesses in our city development, and we need to provide fair jobs for those that have not had a real clean record, because everyone deserves a second chance. You guys, I think the biggest part about all of our jobs and everything else, everyone keeps talking, there's green act and all of these various things that we're making possible part. Our education, education is the key to all of these things, you guys believe or not. We have to keep our kids in school. Jobs are fine, we need jobs, but what we do need is education. Education will solve all of those. With an education, you don't have to knock on the door. With an education, the door opens for you. This is why we have to work so hard. What our future, our future demands is going to keep us safe. Because without a future, where are we? So this is why we work with every, anyone, it's why they have our jobs safe for our community. Thank you.
For me, I think the most important thing, as was said earlier, is technology. Again, I built my first website in nineteen ninety-four. I have been working with technology for the past twenty-five years for small businesses. Many of our small business owners don't know what to do. They don't understand technology, the World Wide Web, things that they can do to make their business grow. But we are also scaring away other businesses from Long Beach. We need to bring those businesses into Long Beach and the rent and the rate for businesses to come into Long Beach is not conducive for the growth that we need. I think we need to look into alternative ways to help the businesses. That way, we will be able to create the jobs, which again is my primary focus.
So, one of the, so as part of my platform for economic equity is ensuring that we support the small businesses. And we have small business owners that are multilingual in this community. So, what I would do is make sure we have incubators in each of the business corner, in the Midtown, in the Pacific, in the Willow, to ensuring that we have it in access, such as entrepreneurship training program that teaches people how do you start a business from getting their license to how do you set up your finance. And we make sure we bring the professionals to the business owner, not the other way around. Things need to be localized. If these are local small business owners, then you need to bring local support for them and that's in their community. And that you are also utilizing these empty vacant buildings as pop-up opportunities to showcase and highlight the businesses so that you can invite the whole city to see what is actually being sold, possibly being sold in these business corner so that they can test out their idea without investing a lot of money in buying a storefront. So that's just one idea, one I want to do to help support the business owners.
Well, I'm a small business owner. I own Long Beach Bullets and More, out of Sixth District. It's very hard for me to get clients that don't have parking at all. And due to the regulations, I can only have two clients per month come to my warehouse. Because the corridor for the business stops two apartment buildings down from where my warehouse is at. So it's very hard. So I meet my clients everywhere they need me to go. So I'm traveling alone. What I want to do is make it more easier for the small business people. We are the backbone for Long Beach. With Sixth District, there is a lot of illegal businesses using storefronts illegally, like the Gabbling, on Pacific, I stopped a porno that was going on, I didn't even know at the time when I was patrolling. But we need more education, we need more teaching of coding, teaching of computers, for the middle schoolers, not only for high schoolers as well. We need to connect the small businesses with the people and it's either by internet, by phone, or by Google. Thank you.
So we recognize that small businesses create problems. Long Beach is known as Diesel Alley. That Diesel Alley. Because so many young people along that alley contract asthma. But the city's district also has a high incidence of childhood asthma. What would you do about those businesses that are creating the pollution in the air that causes childhood and adult asthma? Because I was sitting out in one of the areas in the Sixth District. And I went for something, thought I was having a heart attack. When I went to my doctor and they gave me all my pulmonary exams, he said, "Alex, you got adult asthma." And that is from the Sixth District. So what would you do, helping those small businesses? And yet protecting the community from those small businesses who are polluted air and struggle to breathe?
Thank you, that's a great question. We need to identify who those business owners are. And we need to see what other alternatives we can help them with to offset the pollution that they're dealing. And if it's very serious and there's no other way around it, then we can hold them accountable. We need to make sure that we include that in the new licensing of small business owners or create some tourist stipulations to help stop them. We already know that the quality of Long Beach overall, not just in the Fifth District, is not very good. So that also has to do with transportation. So how do we also solve the issue of transportation? We do have the Wilmington factories close by. So, in the grand scheme of things, there's a lot of issues that contribute to that problem, but definitely working with business owners to see how we can solve that. Thank you.
You know, also, if you guys like being in concert, this is fair. You know, we work very hard, especially with the poor situation because we realize a lot of it, you know, pollution comes from our poor out here. But we're working very hard to be able to solve that with our green team. You know, I work at Cabrio over there and I know, you know, we're sitting on a potluck cake as it is, but you have to understand, is it bad or is it about money? You know, when it talks about money, you talk about people's lives, which goes first. So we have recognized whether the problem is, is whether we want to do something about it. And those are jobs. So do you want to create jobs or do you want to stick with money? So that's the solution, and this solution is not going to be easily solved because the fact that you're dealing with jobs, you're dealing with people's, you know, lifestyle. So, I don't have an answer to that, but I know we're gonna have to work to find out whether we want money or lives. Thank you.
When I was planning to come here, I said to myself, "I'm gonna learn something new today." And that's one of the reasons I wanted to come. And I learned something new because I went to the doctor about a week ago and my doctor gave, I'm forty-three years old, my doctor gave me an inhaler. I've never had an inhaler in my life, but I've been in the Sixth District for two years. And so, all of a sudden, I've developed this breathing issue. So it's very important for me to look into what we can do to resolve this issue. And I believe it's from the ports. Being so close to the ports, because again, I was closer to the 405 and the 710, never had a problem breathing. Now, all of a sudden, twelve-minute walk from the beach, I can barely breathe. So this is something that's paramount for me to look into, to absolutely rectify and resolve because it's our right, our human right, to just simply be able to breathe and live.
So, environmental protection is part of my platform. And I smell that air with on a regular basis and who I call is the South Coast Air Quality Management. And so, there are regulations in place to ensure that companies don't pollute the air. And that's what we need to make sure we do is hold them accountable with partnership because the South Coast Air Quality Management District aren't being paid by your tax dollars. How do I know that? Because I work for State Senator Ricardo Lara. And I work with them to ensure that they are being responsive to city and residents like us. Their role is to help regulate these companies. So it's not just the businesses, but also making sure we work with the partners that are doing the work of managing and controlling the air quality. So that's what I want to make sure we do and that we're thoughtful about how we, you know, impact the employment of people who are working in these industries as well, right? And we want to go into how we're going to be addressing the refineries and all these other, you know, industries that are polluting the environment. Hopefully, that'll be another question. Thank you. Run out of time.
I would help the small business connect with other organizations or other businesses that have great products for their businesses. I know there's a new line that's coming out from Dodge that is Eco Family Vehicles. But I don't know how long that's gonna be, but I'm on the list to get one because the environment is very, very precious to me. All of my stuff, I have this bio degradable except for a few things. And I'm trying my best to figure out how to get rid of those damaging to the environment. Work with as many people as I can to make sure that all the businesses can go green and that way we don't have to damage the environment or probably damage the Sixth District residents too. Thank you.
Air quality isn't just only the issue within Long Beach, so pollution pretty much throughout the LA County. Given what we have at the Long Beach Airport, and one of the, I would say, the second biggest airport, there's so much coming in. I have personally, my nephew have an asthma because of the pollution. So, I don't have the solution for it, but what I plan to do is to make a strict regulation on those businesses that actually produce a lot of carbon dioxide.
I literally, when someone has child, childhood asthma, it's scary when they get an asthma attack. I've been in front days in a hospital with it. And when you see the air, it scares people to death, really. And that's sad. But when we look at our small businesses, we can't find them or punish them. We need to get creative. It starts with traffic flow. How many times you remain idle at a stoplight? And get annoyed because you feel like you're not doing what first of all. It's like they're prepping in that air. We need to fix the roads continuously. They continue to make the downtown look better, but we're full of potholes and we're not moving fast. So we need to fix the lights and fix the potholes. There's been experiments in other countries too though. It's called blocking designs. In Madrid, Spain, they're creating forward sections that are blocked off so cars cannot go in there and create a traffic flow around it. It becomes the benches and nice areas where people relax in and enjoy the community that they're in. Not just have to drive through it. So blocking designs are being tested and are actually increasing business activity. And finally, we need moss walls. Moss walls actually have a CO2 suction rate higher than the other plant.
It is now eight o'clock and as promised, we will now go to the questions from the youth audience. It is then good for the panelists to respond to our questions because they were proper questions. We really want to know, what specifically are you going to do to improve the quality of life in this district for all of the constituents? And we need to hold them accountable. And so that's why we were not only asking what is wrong, but how are you gonna fix it? And what are you gonna do so we can hold you accountable to the office that you're running for in order to provide our public service? So today and tonight, right now, we will turn to the questions from the audience.
Thank you guys. There's a lot of questions from the audience, very interesting. Some of the questions might be biased toward one-handed or something that you support. So it's our job to make sure that it's not biased. So here it goes. What do you feel about gentrification? How would you address this solution to it? What would you want from us? Let's start here.
This is a challenging situation because sometimes we're confronted with gentrification. It's an unfortunate reality in some cases. But what we do and how we do it is going to be a big part of this city's growth. And the general plan has included humane way of how we treat each other and how we work for police in the city. Because not everybody wants a tower, not everybody wants luxury condos. But we shouldn't displace people to do it. We shouldn't hurt small businesses to do it. We shouldn't have a way where somehow we scare people off or that we confiscate property and make it available for the city to do what they want. That's gentrification by force, and I know that's hurt, I've heard that today by a number of people that does happen. But in areas in our district, we need to address that because it's hurting our minorities and the people that live in our city, in our district, because that's what hurts the most.
I'll be frank with you, I don't have the answer for the question of gentrification. However, what I'm looking at here is that within us as a cell, I see a lot of housing and building, but it's not for the right person. It's more about business, more about the big boy wanting more money out of others. So I'll be frank with you, I don't have the answer for this question.
Well, it hit me hard a couple years back when they redid a storefront of mine and I lost about thirty-five percent of my business due to the new signage or the gentrification process that the property owner went into effect and raised our rent about, I think it was like three thousand dollars. So I was forced to move off of Anaheim and Long Beach Boulevard. And I lost thirty-five percent of my business because of, what I want to do is work with the property owners and work with the renters to see what we can come up with, the small business and with renters as well. To see what solution we can come up with and work with them and try to keep them there and try to make the rent high and try to give a sentence for the property owners to redo the property. Thank you.
So I am against displacing our community residents and business owner, particularly our small business owner. And so, but what is important is that we need to revitalize our business corner and our community. So what that means is that we need to bring in partners that are responsible and that are respectful to the community. So that's where it's important to having leadership that seeks out developers that will work with you, work with the community and with our partners to ensure that we have protections in place that doesn't displace residents and that we have that written, whether it's an ordinance, an agreement, so that we are working together collectively in how we want to make a Sixth District that we're proud of and that we have pride in and create a sense of identity through our arts and culture. And so that's the way that I'm against displacement. And that's what I'm against about gentrification, but I am for revitalization.
I am against displacement in terms of gentrification. What I would like to see is some of the older neighborhoods, older homes, people who have been living in these neighborhoods for years to go into those neighborhoods and make improvements that allow those residents to remain in those locations without bringing in a different class of people and displacing the residents that are already in those locations. I'm looking for homeowners who may want to move out of those locations to give options to maybe their renters who've been renting for long term. What can we do to keep people in their homes? That's my primary focus.
You know, if you've been here long enough, you know what gentrification's all about. I sure wish we didn't have to even worry about that because today, we would have a community that I used to live in. It is really changed, which is I think is for the better. But when gentrification causes people to move where they don't want or where they have to move because, because of the, listen. You guys, living in a search area and asking other people to come in and do something that they see this getting ready to happen, if you guys notice and just keep an eye on it, it's our own prize and that is, Orenzo is on his way. Somebody's got to move in order to make room. And I tell you, gentrification is on its way. As sad as that may seem, we've got to be able to stand fast and let these individuals know we we love our community, we love our city. And we're not planning on being out here just because we're bringing no leverage to your location. Be careful, it's on its way. Please, you guys, whoever what you have.
I can't help but think that when we look at business growth, we also think about gentrification and how that affects our personal family. My own family, when we had left to live in Oregon because they couldn't afford to pay more than 50% of their income in rent, which is many of us sitting in this room today. So we need to create protection for all working families. The bill that's coming in January, the Senate bill for rent control will help individuals, but it won't protect everyone. We do want growth, we want business in our city and our district, but that comes with also the inclusivity of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I only a messenger for talking about the tough audience tonight. So I'm gonna let this call to you. How do you address the corruption in the city of Long Beach?
Corruption? Uh, let me think one question. Um, corruption? It always start at the top, right? So we need to look at who are the leaders in our communities, who are the decision makers? And we need more of a transparent government that allows our community to be part of the system we have in place. So we definitely need more oversight committee and more participation from the committees, especially when it comes to policing. And we need to hold our police officers accountable when they are doing wrong to our community. That's where we need the community to be able to participate. And our government, same thing. Our community is, uh, I'm sorry. Our community has a lot of immigrant communities that should also be able to participate in our commissions. They should be also be able to participate in oversight committees. So we need to be able to create more of a transparent government. Thank you.
You know, corruption, and I think all of us realize, corruption comes from all different angles, different nationalities. The way it's in the visuals, you know, what we see is over there. And being the city of Long Beach, you know, we sure have fought the corruption. You know, downtown, in town, around town, wherever you live. You know, corruption is because corruption brings about money. And this is what is so sad for the community, if we're treated, that as poor as it is, we still have a form of corruption because everyone is starting to hate that town a bit. We're gonna have to really define, you know, our attention on what those are. Downtown instead of in town because that's where it all starts. The little city we live in, the park that we live in, seven, some people that live in the sixth district, 7,000 people, the corruption there is very small compared to where it really starts. So it's up to us to really make sure, the one time we have to do when we see any form of corruption, make sure that it is noticed and is reported. Thank you very much.
I initially went to college to be an accountant before deciding to focus on business administration. So as someone who does accounting, you always start with an audit. If you want to get rid of corruption, you have to look at the numbers. Numbers don't lie. You have to look at the statistics, you have to look at the history, look at arrest rates. You have to look at the information that'll tell you who, what is corrupt, where the corruption is. Once you identify the corruption, once you identify who is corrupt, then you are able to make a change. Thank you.
So corruption is basically when the law is not upheld. And so I want to actually bring up a measure that has also been passed by our citizens that was approved by our citizen, and that is Measure BBB. So you all approved that we would have, all elected officials would have three terms. And that is what I thought that we would do in this city. But there are exceptions that are made. Now, is that considered, you know, corruption? Or is it considered a loophole now? So I think that basically what is legal is what's created in writing, right? But again, what is interpreted is again, what is maybe not legal, right? So I think that it's sometime, we, if we want to say city, we have to uphold the law on that end. So that's what I want to think.
Unfortunately, there is corruption in the city of Long Beach. I've seen it and helped evolve, be passed around to city officials, backdoor deals with public conglomerates to bring in certain businesses that are not really good for our district. With me, I'm gonna be transparent. I work for you, you guys don't work for me. I'm gonna be at your beck and call no matter what. My phone is on 24/7 and everybody knows that. And the regular area and the midtown area too. Also, I'm gonna make sure that we audit everything for the sixth district. And again, I'm going to be giving up my paycheck because I don't need it and it has to go back to the sixth district to you guys. That's what it means. Thank you.
Corruption isn't just start right now, last year, 10 years ago. It's been a history in all the sides of this human existence. What I do as a loan officer, I analyze business, I analyze tax return, I analyze profit and loss statement, balance sheet for those are business owner. So it all comes down to transparency. When you have all those numbers, number does not lie. I want to go back to our candidate, Mr. Sharifa, talk about. As a county, you trail down the number. You look all those numbers, do the analysis, and you understand the way all the doors are closed. So my job is to want to make sure that I provide complete transparency. Running a nonprofit, a volunteer, I provide aim to the penny.
Look, I have my master's degree in international business and law from Austria. I've been taught by some of the best people around the world on this. Transparency is not gonna stop corruption. How many of you guys know this about the water hike? Water pump hike, the 20%? Where did that money go? Went into the general fund. Water should not profit and the city should not profit off our utilities. Transparency is acceptance to this. It starts with letting city council people, you want somebody on there that can read these contracts and know what's going on. You only know my attitude towards the city manager. I'll hold them accountable, I'll read these things. But it also starts with business criminal law. Why does it start? Starts with rationalization, opportunity, and motive. You can't take those things away from someone in city, you design plans or policies around that, it will stop business criminal law. Because it doesn't matter whether it's transparent, our transparency will only make this worse.
Next question. Homelessness has arise in the city of Long Beach. How do you plan to deal with this issue and give an example? What is the answer to that? Homelessness has arise in the city of Long Beach. How do you plan to deal with this issue with some examples?
Let's, let's be a little bit more than that number. It went up 32. 32 people. How many people are in this room? We can name everyone that's on that street and they don't sleep at night with their place. As I said earlier, bless up to those who are hungry and blow to those who aren't full because you won't be hungry. Tenny's was this wonderful woman who really got me started. She gave a place over her, a roof over her head. You start with the basics. Because people think differently when they're on the street and have no hope. You give them hope, you give them a roof over their head, you give them food services, people will do better on their own. We all want to do better on our own. We don't need people to pay for things and take care of things ourselves. It's a, it's a bad downward spiral in homelessness. If you don't make sure people get off the street soon, it will be worse for them later. And that could be any one of us.
As I said earlier, homelessness is an epidemic issue in our society, in our community. You can't stop it because there's so many layers of why people become homeless. Men to help, women who've gone through war, come back, our government's not doing a damn thing. Secondly, the housing issue. It's not, well, there is about 41,000 houses out there, but 36,000 people homeless. The city, the county not doing anything, not putting, it's all about business. So my thing is, when it comes to homeless, I wanted to actually go to the core of the issue. What happened? Why it happened? How it happened? Want you understand those, provide all the resources they need. They also need community resources within our community that can help prevent homeless.
Well, like I said before, I was homeless for about a year. So these people come from border care facilities that are mentally ill and they just bust them in and they drop them, and they wander around. So we do have several different homeless issues within the homeless area. You have mentally disturbed, you have people that are dependent on drugs and alcoholism. You have other people that are just really good people, but that cannot afford a place. On one of my patrols, I met Nova, who was unfortunately a prostitute. And she sold herself to Big Enemy. And she was living off of divorce and Hill Street by the river. She's now a manager at McDonald's and she is not selling her body at all. And I keep in touch with her all the time. Two gentlemen that were dependent on alcohol and drugs, I got them together, went with them to every single appointment that they needed, got them a place, and they are sober today. Thank you.
So I want to thank you all for still sticking it out with us after 8:00 PM. So thank you for being here and still here. And I've shared earlier in the ways that I would address how homelessness issue is, one, a preventative route to ensuring that we prevent people from being homeless through workforce development, better opportunities, through a better job. And the other is providing, addressing, providing services for people who are homeless and making sure that we get them through, is a pathway in whether, getting them through emergency shelter first, permanent housing, and then on to something longer term. And the other thing that I didn't get a chance to mention is, how would we address this affordable housing issue is really thinking through other forms of rent stabilization measures, right? So that's the other ways that I would want to deal with the issues of homelessness.
I believe when we're dealing with homelessness, we're also working with hopelessness. So many people, when they become homeless, they also become hopeless. They no longer believe that they can find a job that would allow them to pay the rent. So they make a conscious decision to go buy an RV and park their RV and just live in the RV as opposed to making the decision to come back into society. We have to, first of all, I love the school systems and the education in Long Beach. We have some of the best schools ever in the world in Long Beach. But with education, also, we need trades. We need to be able to teach people skills like construction and information that we took out of our schools. We just focused on less jobs that people were able to do with their hands. Carpentry, plumbing, HVAC, electricians. If we give people skills, they will be able to take care of themselves.
Thank you very much. You know, as far as homelessness, I part of the council to include in the budget. An after hour, the weekend homeless service team. I was also a champion for homeless to work with our animal care team to temporarily house homeless people's pets. I'm serving Thanksgiving banquet on Monday. Because when I used to give out frozen turkeys, a man tried to sell it back to me. And I thought about that, so I became creative. Because the homeless man said, what can I do with frozen turkey? So what I'm doing, I decided to start giving out gifts. And Monday would be one of the largest times we would work with our homeless situation. I've been here for long enough to wait for the homeless and help them to know that, you know, homelessness is not a crime, it's a sin. And it's a nationwide problem, it's just not a problem in Long Beach. So we're, I'm ensuring that everyone will be able to manifest and keep our neighbors the way it should be. And it's just gonna be a problem. You're not gonna stop homelessness of the night, you guys. We have a problem, we're looking at the world with a problem. And please, for the healthiest individuals who are obvious that is homeless. Thank you.
The way I see that we can solve homelessness is providing housing, permanent housing. So then we can provide services. We need to create an oversight committee of $30 million. It's gonna be $30 million allocated to tackle this issue. Talking about transparency, we definitely need an oversight committee from our community to make sure that we're spending every single dollar right. We should be able to create, create strides with the issue, right? Another thing is, we know a report that was released this year, 52% were experiencing homelessness for the first time. So we need to create prevention programs that will help our community step foot in the streets. We need to stop our communities that are going into homelessness. I'm sorry, not step one foot in the streets. So we don't have any more further issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give all the candidates a round of applause. The next question comes from the audience. Yeah. Home disruptions.
Home disruptions.
As a millennial, I see our young generation is not involved in bearing our community. One idea we need to impart to young generation to engage more with our community is often.
Thank you. That is a reality. Our young folks are not voting, they're not participating in our elections. When I knock on doors, people tell me, are you 17? How old are you? You're wearing running shoes, right, and jeans? And I'm like, no, I'm a mother, I've been in the community, living for over 30 years. I will let you guess my age. But part of the program that I, from the organization, I need to participate, that was our priority, to make sure that we involve our community. And it starts from a young age, right? We have to create and work with the school system that we have to make sure that our kids are being taught at schools the importance of voting, the importance of election. Why do, why do they matter? Because if we don't teach them at a young age, they're not going to participate later on in life. Thank you.
You know, I think many of us are, you know, seeing out there with that, that we've lost out on many, of the fact that, let me not tell you what to do. You don't really tell them too much here what to do because the fact that our young kids today are so involved in that YouTube and that new, you know, box that they have at home, they don't have much time to do anything. But if we don't get serious about it, getting them involved, we will lose our community. Because like I said, we're on a, we're on a, I think, a situation where now, our young kids today take no time to do, try to do anything but play sports. It has to be more to that in life. We have to get our kids more educated about life. And then they know that they're gonna have to be accountable one day. We should be accountable now, but our parents are so protective. But remember, that child that you brought here is one day gonna have to be our very own. And we must spend time to let them know, only one day we have to be, you know, accountable for the things that you've done or what we do. Please, let's get our young kids involved. You said we just let them sit it off and watch TV.
I love the millennials. They're wonderful. Our, this generation is a lot different than when I was raised. I was raised in a time when young people, children, they are to be seen and not heard. This generation, they have a voice, they speak out, they want to be a part of something. When I was growing up, we just had this new fandable invention called the microwave, okay? So that was the new thing then. And it took 30 seconds or maybe two minutes to cook your food. Now, in today's age with the millennials, they have Google, they have the internet, they have information at the tip of their hands. So their thought process, the information that they have access to is far greater than we could ever imagine, or we would have ever imagined. is far greater than we could ever imagine or we would have ever imagined. I remember being a young child and my parents saying to me, "To find the answers in the Encyclopedia Britannica." Now they're Googling and they have information. And so I want to be a part of allowing them to use that information for the veterans of the sixth district.
So millennials are not all alike. And if we're talking about millennials in the sixth district, we're talking about millennials living in the second highest poverty rate in the city. So our millennials in this district are encountering more than just wanting to be entertained or wanting to get involved. They need support that is real, that is concrete. And how we do that is we bring services to them, not for them to go to services. We need to activate our park and bring in youth programming that allows them to not only develop skills, but inspire them to do more, to not only find the professions that they feel they can accomplish, but inspire them to dream and to do better, right? And that is our job, not as just elected officials and parents. I'm a parent of two kids. I ran a nonprofit called My Girls in Action. We did youth development, leadership development, and trained the young people to organize in the community and to make it better. They're not just somebody that is there. They're our partners, they're our futures, and we need to invest in them. Thank you.
With the young generation today is, they are fighting gangs that are jumping them, going to school, jumping them after school. Watch the middle schoolers, preo high schoolers, little kids. I mean, these gangsters are going after the young kids because they know that they can get away with a lot more than the adult can. And we need to figure out a way to engage them in voting, that they have a voice. Their voice is not going to be quiet and stay in the corner forever. That they can come out, they can say what's on their mind, they can say what they feel, they can be who they are, and their voice and their vote does matter. And I want to make sure that I'm forming an organization that will go into the middle schools and the high schools to educate them on their rights, on their civil rights, on their freedoms, on their amendments, on their right to vote. Thank you.
We all know the advanced technology has been taken over our lives. We all have caught this smartphone. And the millennials, they know a lot better than we are. Well, I'm half so sure, I'll be fifty in the next couple weeks. I'm not going to, I'm not going to hide my age. So for the millennials, you've got to get them engaged. You've got to talk, you don't want to overtalk, you want to listen what you do want to see. What do we want to change within the community? By listening to the issue, by hearing what they have to say, you have a better understanding within millennials. As you know, within the sixth district itself, seventy-five percent are millennials. Seventy-five percent are homeless. That's quite a lot. So those are the stuff that I'm going to actually sit down and listen to them.
People ask that question.
It's anonymous.
They're like, "People, it's a good question." That's what it starts with. Don't be afraid. Try to have Kennedy said, "Ask not what the country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." Get excited with that. And get your friends excited. They don't get no friends. Because I promise you, they have their own problems. But they should be excited too. You should learn yourself wrong, good people. And find what you're passionate about. What moves you? What do you want to do? What gets you angry? I get angry when I see the Hong Kong protests, for example. These people are fighting for their lives. They're at risk worse than ours. And they don't even have universal suffrage. You're not alone. And you'll always have an office open for you in this district. You call me up, you want to start a program, you get your friends excited, I'll help you get that started. And you can see that you could do a lot more than you actually can imagine. I'm not here because I didn't believe I could be here. I know I can do it, and I want you to believe it too.
Thank you for being seated. First of all, let's take a moment to thank the translator. He's been here for two hours. Hopefully, we have very lovely services and we can help with this thing. Thank you so much. So when it comes to language access, or access is very important. So the next question is, if you are elected, how would you include sixth district residents in development process and invest back into the sixth district?
How many foreigners here today have a conscious proof of their pride and are afraid to get used to it or feel like they can't? There is a process. Many of us don't know it. For the purpose of education, we need to get our licenses and if you can get approved, our certificates will be valid. So the feel, the not, you can't use what you've already learned, isn't fair. We should have language services to help you get, become more a part of this community and integrate. It starts by allowing you to use your education. I know what it's like. They feel like I couldn't use my master's degree here first until it was translated. And I know what it's like to be abroad, to not be able to go anywhere and get a job because you didn't speak the language. With a little bit of drinking and good friends, I now speak German quite well. And I'm not going to say that. But I learned, I became a part of the community. And we need to make our community be a part for everyone else as well. I know what it's like.
If I can hear your question correctly about the language accessibility in the sixth district.
Well, access is very important. If you are elected, how would you make it more inclusive for sixth district residents to participate in the development processes or ideas and invest back into their district?
Thank you. Once I get into the office, I always speak about this from the very first day. I want my office to be diverse. We'll live in a diverse community. Lombe is, I call it, is an international city. We have multiple languages, multiple ethnicities. So with my office, I'm going to have pretty much Hispanic, African American, Cambodian, Vietnamese, Cambodian American. I read and write fluently. I'm a translator. So with that being said, I want to make sure that our community have a full access to my office, my office, with all, all the staff that I have in my office. Thank you.
I would make sure that everybody is heard in my office. I would create meetings so that way everybody can, so I can hear their voice and they can speak in their language, and I can have a translator. I am studying to do a little bit of Khmer. I do Spanish and English and ASL as well. But I want to be open and honest with everybody. If there's a language barrier that should be shut down, we need access to everything. I need to know what you are feeling, and I want to make sure that I am capable enough to fix that problem that you have. Thank you.
So language access is, for me, about accessibility, to be able to freely access information and resources so that communities are included in this city. And I feel like right now, not all of the city, all community members are included. And we need to make sure that we are, that materials are translated and they're available and that we have people available, providing interpretation in every part of the department in this city. And that we are also providing, what I want to do, which is the business incubator in these quarters, is that we have them in multiple language. And that languages isn't always the barrier, sometimes making sure that it's culturally appropriate as well. And that it is explained and is communicated in a way and where it resonates with the different members of our community. So that's the way that I think that we need to ensure accessibility, inclusive activity, and how do we make that work for people so that they can be a part of this, the fabric of this city and that they feel that they are important? Thank you.
I would like to provide access by making every resident of Long Beach Sixth District understand that I am available anytime of the day or night, twenty-four seven, to provide that access. I want to make sure that everyone who lives in the sixth district, I live right here in Cambodia Town, but we're not necessarily representing every aspect of our culture. So I want to make sure that we represent everyone in Cambodia Town, outside of Cambodia Town, in the sixth district. Everyone has representation. That's my primary focus.
First of all, since I wrote the access policy, those who couldn't speak English and was able to come to the city hall and take care of their business, so I decided, say, "Well, maybe I should learn a little Khmer." So I moved on from there. It always helps when you know a little of any language. So this is what makes it so important in a city, in a community in which we live, that's so diverse. The sixth district is one of the most diverse cities, I mean, districts in the country. City, sixth district, you guys, you would not realize when you come to the sixth district, you come into the heart of everything. So you better learn how to speak some kind of language. So I made it so much possible for you as individuals that couldn't speak English or could not speak Khmer, you have a chance to come down and be able to express yourself downtown when you have to take care of business here at the city hall. So this is one way I am just hoping that we can continue to work as a family in our district. That's why I work so hard with my staff, with everybody as a part of every type of language that's working with me. Thank you so much.
As a young girl, my parents, we moved back to Mexico. I went to kindergarten, first grade, and second grade in Mexico. Then we came back to the U.S. I did not speak or write in English by the end of second grade. So for me, language became something that is such a beautiful gift to someone that you give. I invested in my kids, and my kids now speak fluent English, Spanish, and French. So I'm very grateful for this policy that we have, but I also believe that we need to keep our culture by educating our children. And when we educate our children, we're able to share our culture, we're able to communicate with our next generations, why it's important, where we came from and where we're from. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be the last question for the agenda. You're better? You want some more?
Yes.
It's not fast break.
Question is, considering that there is a high crime rate in the area, how would you improve public safety in the sixth district? Let me go get up to see it.
So I think that there are different measures in how we want to approach safety. So there's certainly the preventative measure in where we want to make sure that we're providing our residents all the same opportunities to be able to have pathways to better quality of life, right? A good job, so that we prevent crimes from happening as much as possible. The other is, when crimes do occur, how do we address it, right? What are the ways that we, make sure that we're working in different ways in the community? How do we reinvest money into doing community policing? Ensuring we have an officer that could work with neighborhood leaders to providing trainings and support so that they are able to identify, you know, suspicious activity, but also making sure we don't racially profile people, right? So that's really important and a distinction that we need to make. And that we also are ensuring that we are making use also of various partnerships that we do to get our neighbors to get to know each other, right? Making sure that that's another way that we reduce crime, is the more you know your neighborhood, the more you communicate. So that's with the support of police officers. And I think that it's important that we work with everybody to ensure that we're addressing the different levels of crime. Family violence is another issue that we want to make sure we address as well. Thank you.
I believe that poor people don't steal, right? Hungry people steal. People who are looking for some other way to make a buck, to get over, those are the type of peoples that commit crimes. My focus is giving people jobs, careers, being entrepreneurs with a living wage so the likelihood decreases that these people will become criminals. I also believe, just from living in the sixth district where my house is, that we need better lighting on our streets. We need more police activity, more police patrols in our neighborhood so that much of this crime cannot go unanswered or undefended. But primarily, again, if we have people who are happy and enjoy living in the sixth district, people who love thy neighbor, then crime rates are going to go down. Thank you.
You know, being a conscious person, they say that we have a lot of crime, and I'm not going to deny that. We are one of the district with the most police activities, but we also have one of the district with the fastest response time. We're able to secure the South Division, and that covers part of the sixth district. But now the South and West is looking up for us to provide community. We've always said if something is seen, something should be, if something is seen, something should be said. I recently reached out to, we call it the Ring Doorbell Company, to create a partnership between the city and its residents for rebate programs. And it should be rolling out real soon. And I want to make sure that everyone has access to a discount doorbell that can record, you know, the ones who go and you reported steal all your little property and other crimes that may happen. So with that doorbell system, with the rebate, at least we can have people in our district. So I have, I have the residents that are calling me to report crime, and I have also reported the things. And because if we're going to be a community, things that we see, we must be coming forward. Don't hide from it, you just must be a part of it. And thank you very much.
When we think of safety, how many of you have had an interaction with the police before? Have you ever had an incident where you've harassed, attacked, and whatnot, and you needed services? How many of you don't speak English and can't communicate with your police officer? Will they ignore you, right? So we definitely need to work on our community policing relationships. If you know our police officers, who they are, and they know our community, we will be able to work better together. Another thing, our community is not reporting crimes. They're afraid. Why are they afraid? Can we create a system? Can we create encouragement? Can we work together as community, get together to make sure they're reporting everything suspicious that's happening in our community? We also need to look at infrastructure, right? And some streets, especially on roads, it's dark, it's really dark. You can't see anything. So we need more lighting, we need to fix our streets, we need to make these investments in our community to make a safer community. Thank you.
District six is really diverse. Have anybody seen Chris Rock's video, "What to Do If You Get Pulled Over as a Black Man"? As funny as that video may be, the reality is, it's not fine. But I, I bet you know a lot of videos, Chris Rock's one. But the unfortunate reality we face is crime is up in this city. And I think Dee for bring that up. Because last budget hearing with the police chief, our mayor said, "Crime is not up, it's only social media hype." That upset me. That upset me because I know what our district six's history was like. I know people here tell me stories, what they had to do, what they had to get through in a red line district where white cops treat them differently. That's not like. If you want to do something about how crime is going to up, it starts with the attitude from the top. And also, as I said at the beginning of this speech, it starts with bringing opportunity for our district to get our young men, and our, I mean, men, our young men and women, a better opportunity and a fight chance so they're not treated differently because of the color of their skin.
I'll leave the last person to answer. I want to throw a little bit. As you can see, I have all the numbers. For the last 2017, 2018, 2017, we had only twenty-two homicides in our district. 2018, murder went up to thirty. As of the last twelve months, the last twelve months, we have thirty-six homicides in the lobby. On the city data, they say we all increased, decreased twenty-three percent. That's why. Especially in the sixth district. I can see within the last twelve months, one mile radius I can see within the last 12 months, one mile radius at the McCalla Park, I call that the Stuck Child Park. No one cared about that park. No one wanted to go there. Within one mile radius, 13 homicides occurred. And two of them, two of them is my relative that got shot on the Anaheim and Walnut and on Stanley and Hubbardton. So I want, this is my top priority. I always speak about it. I want to run the police department. I want to find a budget. I want to hire more police department to patrol the sixth district.
Thank you. And now we're allowed.
Uh, one more.
And that's it, folks, now.
Safety is my top, my top, top, top priority. Because I see what lies ahead in the sixth district. I patrol, like I said, every single night mostly, all of sixth district and sub-district. I used to patrol from first district all the way to ninth district. And then I was like, yeah, I'm getting a little bit tired. And I want to focus more on my sixth district. What I want to do is connect you guys with the police department, and the police department connect with you guys. Because there is a disconnect right there. Some of our constituents are afraid to even talk to the police people. They think that they're going to either deport them, beat them up, or do something to them to where they get thrown in jail. And I've spoken with several of the constituents here. And that will be my focus is transparency and making sure that I still patrol and that we get more patrol of police officers out there. And make sure that there's education on both sides. Thank you.
Then another.
And now, we will have closing.
Bathroom break?
Thank you. We talked about a lot of important issues today. We talked about homelessness, safety. We talked about the housing affordability. We talked about the importance of new business opportunities in the district. But this election is not about fans endorsements or what candidate up here has the most money. My grassroots campaign is about you. It's about when I knock on your door, I want to learn what the issues are for you and how we can share ideas on how to fix them. But we need to ask ourselves, are we really happy with the way things are right now? Are you happy in the community that you're building? Do you feel safe when you walk your dog at night? Or are you happy with the fact that you're putting more than 50% of your income in rent? More than 50% of our income is going to rent? Or when we're walking down the street, we're stepping over homeless people? Or that we're just one paycheck away from losing everything? We really need to ask ourselves that. Because if you are, please vote for the council member. Or please vote for the capital that has two percent back. Because people stay the same. I'm not a politician. I'm for the community. And if you want real change, I have your right to. Thank you, and vote for him.
Well, in closing, I just, first of all, I want to thank all of you for being here. Because being here, I really think that it shows that you care. We never had a turnout like this, you know, for our home. But this is wonderful because we live in one of the most diverse areas anyway. It's important to get out and vote on March 3rd because I hope I earned your support because of all of these candidates. I think I've been here long, and I will continue to be here. You know, I think that this is probably where I'll end up dying in this district. And this is where I'm going to make sure that the things that have to be done, will be done. I'm just not a newcomer here. Seventy-five years I've been here. And seventy-five years I've seen things go good and bad. I know Long Beach, I know Strong Beach. And I know all the parts that would you individual try to learn how to know. But in most of that, you guys, this is a city I love. This is a city I will continue to love. There are going to be good things, there are going to be bad things. But all I need for you is to continue to work with me. Because if you need me, I'm there. I'm never nowhere but a phone call away. So thank you very much for allowing me to do this.
Just want to thank everyone for allowing me the opportunity to come today and to speak. One of the things that I would like to let you know about me is that I'm fearless. I'm not afraid to ask the hard questions, to speak to people. That's where Ask Sharifa, my company name, AskSharifa.com came from. Because all my life, when other people were afraid to ask questions or they were afraid of people, or maybe they weren't sure what to do, they go Ask Sharifa. Because I don't know it all. Only God knows it all. But I am not afraid to go to people who have the experience and to ask those questions. I'm not afraid to make changes in Long Beach. I'm not afraid to mess up the status quo. Because what needs to happen is change in Long Beach. That is what I would like to see. I would like to see Long Beach, especially the sixth district, be one of the most prominent districts in the world. That's what I focus on. Not just the sixth district, but not just California, not just Long Beach, but in the world. And I know together, we can do it. Thank you.
So I'm going to ask for an extra minute because I just got a little thing here about being promoted to the chief of staff of Senator Ricardo Lara. So I thank you for that promotion. I actually was a field representative in the district. So I want to just share with you that I was the first person to announce that I was going to run in February. So I've been in this for nine months. And I've raised the money, dollar by dollar. And I've gotten the endorsement because I've earned it because of my work that I've been doing in this district for the last decade. So I've been a labor organizer, been fighting for workers' rights. I've been executive director of My Girls in Action, working in this district not only with Cambodian youth, but we work interracially with other youth, Latinos, African Americans, to improve the quality of life for not only the youth, but as well as the community. And making sure we're reaching out to the community to vote and many other activities. And the other thing that I've done is I've been a health policy advocate, making sure that people have access to affordable, quality healthcare and in language. And then I became the staff of Senator Ricardo Lara. Again, I'm going to ask for another minute to finish up because I got a little bit argument, right? I want to make an argument about that, right? Okay. So anyway, I hope to earn your vote. Thank you very much, and I hope to have your support.
I have been in the sixth district for 14 years. I'm a volunteer for the Long Beach Serv, which is under the Long Beach Fire Department Community Emergency Response Team. I'm an American, a cross-volunteer under the DACT, which is the Disaster Action Team. I am there for you folks, every single night, in my car, patrolling sixth district. And I stop crimes in the process. I took down a human trafficking ring, a drug trafficking ring by Lafayette School. I took down a small business, actually, that was selling drugs to middle schoolers right by Washington Middle School. So I am in the trenches of sixth district. I want to be that beacon of light for you. I want to be that person who fights for you. I don't want to be that person that's going to have that backdoor deal and lining my pockets with money. Like I said before, I'm not going to take that paycheck. It's going to go back into the district for more resources for everybody. Thank you.
Well, first and foremost, I want to thank the community. Give them a round of applause. I mean, they're seventy hours in the day to turn things around. As I said earlier, I'm a genocide survivor. I'm a fighter. If I'm not fighting, I would be sitting here right in front of you. For me, I'm not a politician. I'm a community activist. I've been fighting and having big root in the Long Beach since I came to the state at age 21 for the last thirty years. I have no interest of going well. I'm here to represent the constituents that actually never been represented the way I should be. Normally, I'm invested more time than the way I walk with our community. I've seen the thing, especially around the McCalla Park, things need to be changed. The politics, it's all about politics. We are the community, we need to come together to fight for our rights. And I hope to get your vote by March 3rd.
I know you guys heard me complain about a lot of things in this city. And I try to, want to show you I know what's going on. And I would bring solutions. But let's just remind ourselves where we're at. This is District Six. This is the home of Pete Andrews, a football player. This is the home of Snoop Dogg, who got his roots right here at VIP World Records. And this is going to be the home of Greg Hurst, who's not a politician. Now, if you vote for him, he'll be your politician. And I want you guys to know, you should not let one group of politics. Endorsements do not guarantee your right to choose who you want to win. I agree with Pete Andrews on that. And I want our young people who are going to feel like you can go do something too. This is everyone's district. This, no one needs to feel like they're going to get pushed out. No one needs to feel like they have to go silently. District Six has a lot more to offer. And we're a wonderful community because of the opportunity we have. What brought me here is I love it. And around the world, I love everything I see about the people here. I will do what I can for you. So if you really care about what's going on, you want to make a change, you want to help with that change, go to GregHurst.com and vote, donate, volunteer, whatever you want to do. And join this campaign and ensure that District Six is much better than what the city is going to be.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you as well. And you know that just well. And I would like to thank the candidates because they really led the storm. And I would leave you with just a thought. Because it is going to be important that we involve the residents and everybody. But there is hope. There is hope because there was a project in Long Beach, or Long Beach Hills. And it was designed specifically to engage millennials because they were the largest cohort of any cohort we've had. And it's expected, what, in the next ten years, there'll be 76 million in that cohort. So we thought, we've got to tap into that group to see if they will give to charity. Well, we wanted to raise $350,000. And one day of giving, we might as well raise $820,000. So I will leave you with that, and I will leave you with one thought. It was a poem that was written by Dr. Benjamin Hayes for the Department of Health. And it's called "Ninety". I only know Ninety sixty seconds in it. Or pardon me, I did not choose it, but I know that I must use it. A count for it if I use it, suffer if I use it. Something meant it, a eternity to sing it. And I think we should leave here tonight, understand that every minute of our lives is one that we give our best. Thank you for coming. Make the job for you, sir. I'm glad you took the deal. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you, sir.
So sorry for butching your name. Nancy, you are amazing.
You are not the first person to have butchered my name, believe me.
Mine too. I'm like, yes, what's going on?